Next council will move to our resolutions and ordinances. First is the third and final reading. This is a rezoning request. The address is 107 West Hempstead. This has been rezoned from a B1 to an R3. Has anyone received any objection to this? This is a public hearing. We'll open at this time if there's anyone wishes to speak on the rezoning issue. Now we'll close the public hearing and ask that we ask for a motion to approve the request for rezoning.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Boyer. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Silvers?
Yes.
Reblinski?
Yes.
Thank you. Next council, we just a resolution to set time and date for a public hearing and we're proposing our next meeting November 26th, 7:00 PM for the vacation of a water and sewer easement, the Roosevelt addition. And so we'll just like a motion then to just place that on the agenda. Anything else, Kevin?
Yes, Your Honor, this is on the north seventy-five foot of the current construction for the Hy-Vee gas station there. And check with all the departments, there's really, I really don't know why that seventy, that north seventy-five foot all the way across was put into an easement and nobody seems to know that, but we certainly don't have any objection to vacating and have no use for the easement. All our infrastructure being in the right of way.
Very good. So we'll take a motion then to set November 26th.
So moved.
Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign. Thank you. Next, we have a request for a commercial tax abatement at 800 West Kirkwood. Kevin Phelps. Kevin, can you tell us something about this property and the request? Or is Mr. Phelps here? Okay, great.
It's a twenty-unit mini-story.
Okay.
On the corner of 800 and Kirkwood. That is just built out.
Yes, that's right. Okay.
Across from the Falco?
Thank you, very good. And then this is within our program for three-year, hundred percent, commercial tax abatement. You see the values on the application. And entertain a motion to approve the request.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Silvers. Any discussion? Now please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Silvers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Reblinski?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, I'm just gonna look at my calendar here. Just wanna see what dates are our options. We would like to set our council meeting for December. As you know, council in general, because of the holidays, we like to just schedule one meeting. It looks like the seventeenth is the middle of the month. I'm gonna suggest that date. That would work for everyone. Intain a motion to set December seventeenth for the city council meeting, the only city council meeting in December.
So moved.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Silvers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign. Thank you. Next council, in Mayor's report, I have one request for a board appointment, and this is to the CBB Board. Corey Madsen, who has served for a couple of years, is moving off of the board, and I'd like to recommend Sherry Klunder, who's a State Farm agent here in Fairfield, to replace Corey for a term of three years.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign. Thank you. Wanted to just, Kevin, did you just say?
I think John's here. He wanted to talk about our abatement on his report.
Okay, that'll be coming up in just a second. I just had another, just a couple of comments, John. I just wanted to mention, council, that we have begun with our Blue Zone representatives. We've had two meetings with the, what are referred, what's referred to as the Power Nine. This is kind of the executive committee of the group that's going to be working with our representatives from Wellmark, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and the Blue Zone organization to create what they call a blueprint, which is a plan for the community, what kinds of initiatives that we're going to take on. We also have seven different community committees that are set up with co-chairs, so there are fourteen other community leaders that are involved in putting all of this together. That process is going to continue over the next two months, and then in January, there is a, what's it referred to? It's a, it's a day, two, actually, two days of training at the Blue Zone Institute where we'll learn, I think, in more depth how this is applied to communities. We come back and finish the plan writing process over February and March, and then probably a rollout in April. But it's going very well, and I think we're recognizing as we're going through the process that we do have so many things in place that we'll be able to put into the Blue Zone area. And what we did learn, I think, from this, when we were visited by the group, that it is a process of going through a certification. So work sites and restaurants and grocery stores and schools, and many of these different areas of the community will be certified as Blue Zones for qualifying in the areas that they had mentioned. And I know that we've gotten great responses already from many companies and certainly all of our grocery stores and many of our restaurants, and we think we can accomplish a lot of this very, very quickly, I would say possibly by the end of next year. So I just wanted to give you a brief update on what is going on there. And then we'll move on to our city attorney report. John?
This is actually a pre-report. November 26th, we're gonna have a hearing at the start of the meeting. It'll be to review a revitalization plan. Courtesy of Joy, in the front operation here, which works very well together. Forty-two hundred notices went out to occupant tenants and water users, and that was followed by a taxpayer order notice, more than three thousand more notices. That's what we tried to do once before, but this time it went off of, no hitches, very grateful we went into that. So now we've complied with the state statutes and can hold this hearing. The hearing, I'm getting calls, Kevin's getting called, I'm assuming maybe Joyce getting called, and the mayor's getting called, and people wondering, they're not really so interested in what the revitalization plan and how to get the residential abatement. So we're gonna have to probably detour a few people that come to this hearing, but I expect you may have a turnout with that and the notices out, and I hope they have some to deal with, even if it's a small percentage. And when we're here, the discussion will be focused, at least what we should be hearing, is things that we've added to the plan that are different from what we did before. So we're updating something that hasn't been really gone through in its entirety since the early nineties. And we're adding residential abatement, which our committee recommended. You'll have an opportunity all to vote on it as a council, and hopefully the resolution will approve the plan, and that'll be followed by an ordinance that updates your ordinance so that you can function for at least ten years without needing to do this again. The plan, the way it will end in the resolution, I believe, what you're gonna see, will be referenced as everything up to the effective date of the new plan, what we treated as affirmed or ratified under the old plan, which we have several abatements to destruction in the last three, four years that need to be reaffirmed and ratified. And then this is all targeted at being operational with the new plan and the new ordinance in effect, at least by February first. That's a deadline that our assessment, she'll do her new assessments and reassessments in January, and anybody that applies to abatement, they'll be looking at what she has to say about what she thinks the value of their improvement is, it's gonna be actually debated. So it all ends up in accordance with the law, as far as what the real abatement amounts, but it all starts in our planning office, once we put the new ordinance into effect. So the 26th, we'll have our public hearing. The 26th, you'll have a resolution considering the revitalization plan, then you'll have the first reading opportunity for the ordinance. We'll get, which in the statute that says if enough people were to ask the council to have a second hearing, you have to do that by petition, and it would take hundreds of signatures, I can imagine that, but if that were to happen, it would have to be delayed for a second hearing and then go on the ordinance. But otherwise, the ordinance can't be passed until it's thirty days after you have your public hearing. So that will be after your December council meeting, so the passage of the ordinance really won't take place until January, and it'll be up to you if you decide to pass it through the first reading on the 26th, or you could do a first reading in December, but to finally pass it, go through the second and third, will be into January, and you'll need to publish it so that it's in effect by February first. So that's the mechanics of it. It'll become effective after publication, and we should be able to make our February first, February first deadline. Honestly, thought we'd have it passed before the end of the year, and so that's what you can expect the next meeting, and you may have the whole room full of people, I guess, to figure out whether they're doing abatements or not, but that will be something that you'll tell them, we're still a couple months away. Questions?
I hope, I hope we have that much new home construction planned. That's great. Great, thanks, John. Next, we'll move on to our committee reports, Public Safety and Transportation.
The Public Safety and Transportation Committee met on November eighth, and you should have received an email with the minutes of that meeting. Basically, we covered three topics. One was the beach ordinance, the potential golf cart ordinance, and the deer management proposal. So just briefly, the committee met with, together along with a few friends of the beach that, as well as Derek from Park and Rec, to discuss some proposed changes, and basically it boils down to, I think, three or four items. One is just establishing that April first through November first would be the swimming season. We're adding language that prohibits horse play. We are being more specific about rescue devices. And then we're also combining some verbiage on the buoys that are used out there. So the, let's see, the proposed sentences, "The buoys are not intended to be used for horse play, but may be used by open water swimmers to rest." So those are the suggestions that I'll be sending to John Morrissey so that we can draft the proposed ordinance. So you'll be seeing that in the next council meeting. Any questions on that topic? Okay. The second one is the golf cart ordinance, and Chief Harvey had done some research with Tom Gamrath about how we could come up with an ordinance so that the golf carts would be complied, used in compliance, basically on city streets. We've, some of the details there would be that they would need to be inspected, they would have to have turn signals, windshield, some other inspection type items to be added. Do you wanna mention a few of those?
They basically have to be roadworthy, so anything that was required on a car would have to be required on the golf cart. Windshield, turn signals, headlights, et cetera.
And we're still going with suggesting a valid driver's license, so you'd have to be sixteen years old with a valid driver's license. That would make sure that everybody had completed a driver's safety course and must comply with all state and federal laws. So three-block radius, the most direct route to the course. The carts must be state roadway-ready, inspected, and comply with all state and federal laws. So that's the proposal that will be going to John for drafting. We're gonna keep John busy, drafting for the golf cart ordinance. Questions?
It's a three-block radius for the country club, and then it allows at Walton Club, for the residents of the Walton subdivision, to be able to get around to the clubhouse, however it prohibits them from being on Walton Road or driving out on the city streets out there.
Yes, thank you. I'd forgotten that part.
Windshields? I'm not familiar with windshields in golf carts. I think somebody had one.
A Plexi glass shield.
Yeah, yes.
It's gonna be quite a bit of modification to a golf cart to make it.
It'll be relatively, exactly. It'll be an expensive venture, but if they don't want to either pay the $20 for the housing of them, it was a concession to allow them to get their golf carts there without having to trailer them.
And for clarification, that's, that's state law, right?
Correct.
To make them roadworthy, they have to have all these things, so. Final topic was the deer management proposal, and we talked about a couple of different ways to move forward. We had several visitors in the meeting providing their suggestions as well. In fact, we had Nikki Weaver, who is, I didn't write down, is it wildlife conflict that she's an expert in?
Wildlife management.
Management, okay. All right, so she provided a couple of different ideas about how to control some of the deer population that are non-lethal ways, gave us a couple of websites to take a look at, talked about a program that could potentially be started where the insurance companies might wanna get involved, you know, to kinda help with some, cut down on some of the claim costs that they're seeing. Basically, the objections, the two objections for that are safety and that the deer are suffering. Bill Kay also came to the meeting and shared his stories. He lives on South Main, so he had some stories to share about the number of deer that are in his yard as well. I have taken, I lost track, the number of phone calls. My daughter's looking at me like, really, Mom? I'd like to use the phone. So I've gotten phone calls, messages, emails, both pro and con. Deer, it seems to be very hot, a hot topic for the, for the city, so do we have our guest telling?
Yeah, the local regional Department of Natural Resources depredation biologist, Greg Harris, wasn't able to make it to our committee meeting, so invited him tonight if we had any questions for him about how deer management programs work in city limits.
I would like for him to come up and just kinda give a synopsis, if you wouldn't mind, and then I have a couple of questions as well. Thank you for coming.
Well, you're welcome. And you know, I'm just here to give recommendations for the city, and I'll tell you the same thing that I told the other members of the committee that I met with. The DNR does nothing to preclude deer hunting in any city here in the state. It's always a city ordinance, so. And I was asked to give my expert advice on how to manage populations. I mean, we manage deer by killing. There's no birth control, it's approved by USDA out there, okay? You can do stuff to, to limit the damage, such as browse damage and stuff, but you keep, that's still not population management, so. Anyway, I mean, I just wanted to say, you know, since you brought, brought up another expert, anyway, I just wanted to let you know, that's not the population. You could move the deer somewhere else, but, and you know, that's been brought up before as far as using cloverleaf traps, moving deer. The only thing on wild deer, there's about a ninety percent mortality. It's called capture myopathy. You handle them, even if you're drugging them, they die, so. And you know, that, that's gonna run you about fifteen hundred to two thousand deer that are killed anyway, so. Anyway, I'm here, as far as hunting, the bow hunting is safe. I know Michael brought that up. If there's anything that happens, as far as injuries, as bow hunters fall out of tree stand, in fact, we've had a fatality this year over in Henry County that fell seventeen feet out of the tree stand. That's why, you know, body harnesses are recommended if you're climbing up in a tree stand. Had another gentleman, was coming down out of the stand, fell off backwards. Luckily, he wasn't killed because he had rattling antlers on his backpack and landed on his back. Luckily, they didn't go through him and things, so. And there's been another, there's actually been three people fall out of trees there this year, so.
So I know that, that I see a lot of deer in town. I see, I work north of town, I see a lot of deer there, too. Is, in some of the things that we've read, I know Connie, you had come up with a couple of articles and such, can you talk about the, the counting that you can do for the deer? I know that there was like some sort of a program, and I don't know if it was DNR or not, that they were doing a flyover?
Yeah, we do aerial flights, typically in January, when we have a good snow cover. Usually, I get together with our GIS person, and then she works up a map, and we zone it out and do a flyover. But just to give you an idea on that, that's just a snapshot in time. I mean, for that particular moment when I'm flying, but it gives you a good baseline of the number of deer that you got within the city limit.
And I think that's good information to have.
Unfortunately, my friend, our helicopter pilot, he just passed away three weeks ago. I've been using him for a decade here in the state. His wife's a pilot. I, I think it's a little bit too soon. I haven't contacted her, but I'm gonna be getting a hold of her to see if she'll be fine, but he, he's done it so, so long as far as the deer aerial counts, plus he did the goose counts up on the northern part of the state, and it was gonna be a major loss, so.
Well, we're sorry for your loss. Do you have any idea how much something like that would cost?
Well, I have to, by state law, I have to have that bid out for a contract. Don't quote me on this, but I think it was something like three fifty an hour is what it is, flight time. What I do is, is I sport that cost with the six.
Okay. And would you estimate?
That's flying out of Marion Airport, too.
Okay, so how long do you, would you think it would take to do something like that?
How many square miles is, six point two?
Go.
Six point four, actually. Probably around an hour and a half to two hours.
Okay.
Probably an hour flight.
Are you taking photographs? You taking photographs?
You know, an hour flight time down, you know, an hour, that's around four hours. Typically, because I just don't fly the, the city limits, I usually, on the national flight, I like to fly, fly a one-mile perimeter around the city because they address, address the animals out. I mean, that, that gives me a better idea. They, you know, and like I said, I've got the city zoned out, break them, it's compartmentalized and everything, so I'm looking at it, okay. In a lot of cases, you can look at a city and an aerial map of it, and like this, I mean, you, you can get basically the square area, break it out, you know, that be the center, so most of it's gonna be in your, in your quadrants there, you know, the northeast, northwest, southwest, and southeast, I mean, if you look on it, you know, there's some places you have habitat going up in the city, but most of it's gonna be on the perimeter.
One other question, and then I'll quit monopolizing the floor. Do you, are you aware of any groups that actually come in and do the hunt to thin the population out rather than just opening it up for a deer season?
Yes, white buffalo does it. They're, they're out of the east coast. I hope you have a pretty good budget to plan on doing that, because it's pricey.
But no one local, no, like in the state of Iowa that, you know?
No, and if you decide to go that route, you're gonna have to present as a city your own management plan to the National Freeze Force Commission. That does not go through.
Okay.
Next, council, any questions?
I have one question. Can you speak to, is there such thing as a healthy deer population? Or in other words, when it gets overpopulated, it's unhealthy for the deer because of X, Y, Z?
Exactly. If you get too many deer, then there's stress in it because there's competition for available resources, which when you induce stress into any living organism, you know, that, that makes it more susceptible to disease at that point. So, yes, stress can, can result in lower body weight, lower conception rate.
And a couple times I've heard on emails saying that if you kill this, the deer population, that they somehow just make up for it by breeding more.
Well, what you gotta look at is, you know, if you have an unhunted population and your own mortality is with deer vehicle accidents, that, that population can, can double in three years. That's because the recruitment rate is point three five percent, anywhere from thirty percent to thirty-five percent. So it's pretty easy to figure if you don't have any outside mortality, you know, we're not in a state where we have the big natural predators that were here one time, they kept the populations in check, so, so, and we won't ever see that again.
I know, I hear there's a cougar running around. But I'm not in favor of bringing more cougars.
Most efficient predators that have one deer were, were the wolves. I mean, a wolf pack will use a kit, kill a deer a day.
We're not in favor of that either.
How many, just in terms of numbers, how many, if you did an organized kill where you brought in like an assassin, how many deer could you, how many deer could you bag in a, in a certain amount of time, in that dispensation of time that they're there?
You know what? It's just like any unhunted population, at first it's gonna be easy, but they wise up pretty quick and get shot and everything.
So, two hundred? Hundred, fifty?
Oh, it depends.
It varies, obviously.
Yeah.
What, what would be a successful call?
The only place that this has ever taken place in the state is Iowa City. Iowa City spent well over a million dollars on trying to control their deer population, because here's another thing, is if, if you have shooters come in, then the city's gonna be required to pay for processing those deer, too. So you figure, most deer, they don't charge on a per-deer basis, it's an hourly basis, so it depends on how good the, the hunting, but I, I've got records of white buffalo, and it was running around, around three hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars a deer, plus the processing, which is another sixty-five, so it was more sixty-five a deer.
In Iowa City, what's the average call that they make?
The average kill? Well, it started out pretty high. I think that initial year that white buffalo came and shot, I think that they shot close to four hundred deer. And then, then it's just dropped over time. And, you know, with those kind of numbers, at that four hundred, those deer weren't costing as much, because, I mean, it was like shooting fish in a barrel there at first, but as it went along, then the, the cost per unit effort went up in the, the cost that, you know, for the city. Also, Iowa City was fighting overtime to the police and fire department to haul the deer up to Solon, up to the locker, so they could continue to keep shooting. They, they figured what's what they were paying an hourly rate. I think Tony DiNicolino owns it, and you can look on their website, but I think he was charging a hundred fifty an hour. His assistants were getting a hundred dollars an hour.
Thank you. Any other questions, council?
I have a question. Do you have any statistics on, you know, if the deer, if the bow hunters are in a deer stand, it doesn't seem like they can, how, you know, easily, effectively track a deer that's not killed immediately. Do you have any statistics on how many deer that are shot by bow hunters that just get away, that they, you know, have to die on their own a week later or whatever?
That, that all comes back to, most the hunts, and they have a proficiency test, and they want, want the hunters to limit shot. I mean, a deer that's hit, if you're the thoracic cavity with a sharp broadhead, is gonna be dead within fifty to a hundred yards.
But you don't have any statistics on it? I mean, I, because I've read things, you know, there's people saying, oh, well, you know, half the deer that are hit by bow hunters are not hit in the thoracic cavity and don't die right away, and most of them get away and die a week or two later of a infection because, you know, because the arrow.
You know, if it goes in the abdominal cavity, I mean, that's sheer death. This paragenitis is gonna set in, you know, that deer's gonna, it's gonna take anywhere from five to seven days for that, that deer to die, and it can end up a long life. The nice thing about, about arrow shot deer versus a gunshot, a bullet shot deer The nice thing about, about arrow-shot deer versus a gunshot, a bullet-shot deer, is because they, they killed by two different methods. Arrows and the broadheads killed by hemorrhaging. They're opening up capillaries and the, the animal bleeding out. So it's a fairly clean type wound. Where a bullet is killing by hydrostatic shock. Not that there's not damage to capillaries, but it's two different methods of how the, those two projectiles end up killing. When a bullet does that, then, then it causes all kinds of infection there, and actually pushes material in. So, I don't have those statistics. I mean, you, you can look, it would depend on who, who you're, you're looking at. If you go to a hunting, anti-hunting organization, you're going to see one set, set of statistics. If you go to an archery organization, you're going to see, see another set of statistics. So, it's somewhere probably in between the two. And it depends on the caliber of the hunt. I'm a bow hunter myself. I can count three deer that I've lost in, in my life. Don't even ask me how many I've killed. Because I couldn't even tell you that, that kind of thing.
Easy, man, we are in public.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any, any other questions, counsel?
One last question. Some people have recommended just allowing people to hunt in the county and not doing it within the city. In terms of deer behavior, if they're in an area where they know they're safe, and then suddenly now they're not safe, will they tend to move away from those areas in time?
Oh, yeah.
So by allowing city hunting, you're essentially moving them outside of the city limits.
Yeah, you're, you're getting ingress, egress of deer, but yeah, it's definite that cities, particularly the deer on a purpose where they're being hunted. And, and that's a learned behavior, that, you know, it's matriarchal society. I mean, those, those deer, as soon as they, particularly with the gun hunters, you know, as soon as they hear the, the cars pulling up, the first couple shots, they're, they're moving in the city. It, it just, and it just in cities. And to give you another example, state lines, you know, the Genze, who's here in Iowa, Missouri, they'll coincide. I mean, there's ingress, egress of animals. I mean, I've worked, State of Missouri, also the State of Kansas, worked on an area right on the border. You can just see the movement of deer back and forth. And once again, those seasons did coincide, so.
Thank you. Susan, what are next steps with your, with your committee?
I guess we are moving forward with drafting an ordinance for the deer management proposal. That's what we, we voted on. I personally would like to see us do some sort of a flyover and get a count. That, that would just make me feel more comfortable knowing, even if it's a snapshot in time, knowing that we really have an over-concentration of deer. So, I'm looking for comments as well.
Well, I, I'd just like to say, you know, I think we're still looking at some of the other non-lethal opportunities, if you will. And Nikki's been very helpful in that department. But I guess I also want to say, if we, if we in fact move forward with a, you know, an ordinance, it's, it's, I want people to know that people aren't going to be walking in and out of people's backyards, and that it's going to be really tight, tightly written and specific, and so that I think, I'm hoping that it will balance out both sides of the argument in the sense that, you know, we have a lot of people that don't, don't want it to happen. We have a lot of people that do want it to happen. So in, in, I think we're looking at the periphery of the town, not, we're not talking about the center of town. We may be just talking about private property versus parks, you know, like Chautauqua Park or something like that. So all those little details aren't completely flushed out, but hopefully, it will balance the concerns of, of the population here, the community.
And I, and I also think, too, that what we originally draft, I don't think people should get extremely excited about what we originally drafted because I don't envision that being the final. I mean, I think it'll be a work in progress. We'll tweak it, we'll, we'll talk about it, we'll take public comment. So I, I'm just putting that comment out there, which, you know, it's not going to be something that's just going to fly through on the first draft kind of thing.
Okay. Thank you for your report. Next, we'll move to our city administrator report. Kevin?
Yes, Sean Rodd, placing in front of you guys a couple pieces of paper about American Development. Apparently, when American was being developed, American had a certain size water and sewer extensions that they were going to, and this went through subcommittee, but that they were going to use, and the city, one of those changed to be a little bit larger, of course, planned for future development. And the agreement was with the subcommittee that we would basically pay back what would be the difference between what the facility actually needed and what the city wanted. Darren?
Yes, we, we did discuss this in a, a subcommittee meeting, as I recall. I've been searching back through emails for the last three years trying to actually locate those minutes, and I've been unable to, to this point, but I'm sure I will come across it. But the discussion was, is that where the American sets back on the back portion of the lot was going to leave the front two parcels for development. And if we did not have a proper-sized water and sewer line running through that area, we would have to go through upsizing each time that would happen. So the benefits of doing it at this point, and then if and when new development starts on the other two parcels, that infrastructure would already be there, then that would work. American only needed a specific-size line to work their facility with, but it didn't take into, into consideration any, any other development out there. It was taking into consideration only theirs. And so the offer was made that we needed to have it larger. We would pay the difference in upsizing over what their plans had said. And that's what this is about.
Yes, a very intelligent thing to do, really, and good planning. A six-inch water main in the beginning was going to be the need, and then the city wanted to go to a 10-inch, and it was a four to a 12 with respect to sanitary sewer. So this was a good maneuver. I was going to hopefully get the spirit of counsel about placing this on our next agenda for approval, so that I could mail that out. A total of $15,400 difference, as you noticed there, water, $4,900 water main increased cost with a $10,500 sanitary sewer increased cost.
It sounds reasonable to me, but what, how is that, how would that be? Where would the money come from?
There's, there's money in both reserve funds.
Capital reserve.
For sewer and water.
Respect, yeah.
Right now. That would cover those.
Yeah. And, and of course, it's probably a better deal. We probably got a better deal in doing that had we actually, you know, contracted to do the same distance ourselves, but I guess that goes without saying.
All right, thanks, Kevin. So we'll look for that at our next meeting.
Great, thank you.
That brings us to our adjournment. Entertained motion.
Can I do my quiet zone update?
Oh.
Did you ask at the beginning of the meeting?
No, you didn't ask.
It's just talk.
Yeah. All right. So we have a date. I have a date with the quiet zone for a week from today. Should be officially the establishment of our quiet zone here in Fairfield. I spoke with our contact at the railroad company, said their legal team was reviewing our notice of establishment. Said, are we on for the 20th? They said, should be. So it's not the 20th. I'm sure it'll be shortly thereafter, hopefully in time for Thanksgiving. So, we're almost done.
So the notices go out internally, and then there's a sign put up a mile outside of town on either side?
Yeah, that's the railroad company's job, to put their signage up. Our signage that says, "No train horns currently are bagged at every crossing." You see these plastic bags that say, "No train horns." We don't take those bags off until right before the 20th.
Those external signs are going to be pretty important, I would think, initially.
The no-train-horn sign?
Along the tree.
Along the tracks.
The, the signs that are a mile out.
Oh, for the engineers.
Right.
Yeah, we'll remind them. If they do accidentally, I'll call my guy.
Well, it's just, I just don't, I can't see it being a perfect system on day one, that's for sure.
Probably not, so, but it'll be a start. One other thing, side benefit from this whole process is that I'd say our relationship right now with both the railroad company and the DOT is really good. We've got the railroad company offering to help us smooth out the Fourth Street Crossing. They're going to send me an estimate. We're going to look into maybe a 50-50 cost share, maybe get the DOT to kick in. But when I started this process, this project, got on this project in 2010, there was definitely frustration from the DOT I got to talking to at some point about, we talk about doing this, and we never get anything done. I assured the guy that we'd get it done, so he came and visited, and he was very friendly, a lot of smiles. And the BNSF guy, the railroad guy, is actually very amicable, which kind of surprised me because that wasn't our experience in 2010 at all. So I just want to encourage everyone to continue to make friends with the railroad company and, and not complain about the past train horns being excessive, because that's, they're just doing their job. They're, they're, they're in business to, to make money by hauling goods on the tracks. And so we just respect their, their position and move forward as friends.
All right, thanks for your report, Michael. I think we'll have a sort of an official recognition of the establishment of the quiet zone in our next meeting, should it actually take place. I'm skeptical. Entertained motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Boyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.